I would like to call this meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on May 10, 2022. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson?
Here.
Gross?
Here.
Quinn?
Present.
Goodrich?
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city administrator, and the city attorney, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by when?
Seconded.
Seconded by Gross. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Onto item number four. I have three proclamations this evening. I will start out with the first two, a proclamation for Bicycle Month and Bike to Work Week. Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, and environmentally sound form of transportation, recreation, and enjoyment. And whereas increasing bicycle access and safety enables residents of Coralville, including young people, to participate more fully in the educational, social, and economic life of our community. And whereas the metro area bicycle network, including our off-street trail system, now attracts bicycle tourism and economic development that helps support local businesses. And whereas throughout the month of May, residents of Coralville can experience the joys of bicycling by participating in educational programs, rides, commuting events, charity events, or by simply going for a ride. And whereas these activities create greater public awareness of rights and responsibilities of bicyclists to improve safety for all. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Coralville, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Bicycle Month, and May 16 through the 22nd, 2022, to be Bike to Work Week in Coralville, and urge all residents who are able to join in this observance by bicycling for fitness, recreation, or to commute to work. Further, I ask that all motorists drive safely and with full attention to the road by putting away electronic devices, obeying all traffic signs, signals, and speed limits, sharing the road by allowing no less than five feet of separation when passing a bicyclist, or taking to the adjacent lane to pass on roads with speed limits over 25 miles an hour, and yielding to bicyclists and pedestrians as required by law. Signed on this 10th day of May, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay, and I think we have some folks that are here to accept the proclamation. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Sure. My name's Jim Conard, and I'm a Coralville resident and business person. And the reason I'm accepting the proclamation on behalf of the Bike Iowa City group is I am a Bike Iowa City Ambassador. The 20 seconds comment that I would like to say is that the City of Coralville really should be commended for being such a friendly environment to cyclists, whether they're biking to and from work, commuting, or enjoying our biking community recreationally. My favorite areas are either the paved trails that we've got, or particularly from the Tom Harkin Trailhead, those single-track paths that we've got. So we've got a lot to offer. As a business person, I do believe, and I've heard from our customers at the bank, that cycling is an amenity in Coralville that does attract people to our area. And I just think that's wonderful. So for all the reasons that you mentioned, Mayor, I appreciate the proclamation and proud to accept that on behalf of the Bike Iowa City group. Now, all of the events and activities that you mentioned can be found on the BikeIowaCity.com website. So there's a lot going on in May. It's going to be a fun month. So thank you.
Fantastic. All right, let's, would you like a photo?
Oh, sure.
You bet. Okay, on to...
There you go.
On to the next proclamation. Next proclamation is for Building Safety Month. Whereas the City of Coralville recognizes that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, and others in the construction industry work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas the International Codes, the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the nation, are used by most U.S. cities, countries, and states. These modern building safety codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month, sponsored by the International Code Council, recognizes the critical role our communities' building safety construction and design professionals play in assuring safe, sustainable, and accessible buildings. And whereas "Safety for All: Building Codes in Action" is the theme for Building Safety Month 2022, and it encourages us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, and understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all our benefit. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Mayor Megan Foster, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Building Safety Month in Coralville, Iowa, and encourage all citizens to participate in this observance. Signed on this 10th day of May, 2022, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okey-dokey. All right, and we have some of our city staff here to accept this one. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Foster. I just want to take a brief moment on behalf of the Community Development Department and the Fire Department to thank our local partners, our local developers, contractors, construction workers, tradespeople, all who work with us in creating safer, healthier, and more accessible buildings in our community. Without their efforts, we couldn't do that. I'd also like to point out, besides the safety benefits, there's also economic benefits to having strong building codes and fire codes in a community. The safer our community is, the less of a liability we are perceived to be by insurance carriers. So the better our building codes are, and the better those codes are enforced, the lower the insurance premiums are that our residents pay. So with that, I just want to say, you know, thank you to our partners, and that's all.
Thank you very much for your work. All right, would you like a photo?
Yes, please.
Okay. Dave, would you introduce who we have here?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. Bruce Wade, sir, our fire chief, and Chris Sherwood, our police sergeant.
Okay. Onto item number five, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker has five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers, or any accommodations that an individual speaker might need. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak with us this evening? Okay. We will move on from there, on to item number six. This is a public hearing for a fiscal year 2022 budget amendment. This public hearing is to amend our fiscal year 2022 budget for revenues and expenditures that are the result of bond refinancings, and the receiving and allocating of our ARPA funding. And we have our Finance Director, Tony Rotlin, here to give us some information.
Well, Ms. Mayor, you summed it up perfectly. It's the refinancings and the ARPA funds that this accommodates, and it makes sure that we don't exceed our expenditures.
Fantastic. Thank you for that overview. All right, I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to us on this item? Are there any written comments?
No, Richard.
All right, seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2022 budget is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
The resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number seven, Lot 1, Red Hawk Subdivision, Part III. This is the second consideration of this item. This would rezone to a commercial, this is a rezoning, to a commercial planned unit development II district, and this will allow for a Dunkin' Donuts drive-through restaurant. Could we have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2022-1002, and ordinance amending the Coralville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the City of Coralville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 1, Red Hawk Subdivision, Part III, from CPUD 1, Commercial Planned Unit Development 1 District, to CPUD 2, Commercial Planned Unit Development 2 District, introduced for adoption, second consideration by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or discussion on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Ordinance is approved on its second consideration, all ayes. Item number eight, Lot B Heritage Estates. This is the second consideration of this item as well. This would change the land use map for a property located south of I-80, north of 13th Street, and east of 14th Street. This would change that from open space to low-density residential use. Could we have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2022-1003, and ordinance amending the Coralville Community Plan to reflect certain property, generally known as Lot B Heritage Estates, Coralville, Iowa, to be designated low-density residential use in place of open-space use. Introduced for adoption, second consideration by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by...
Seconded by Goodrich. Any other questions or discussion on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
The ordinance is approved on its second consideration, all ayes. Item number nine, water and solid waste rates. We discussed, this item was on our last meeting as well. This is the second consideration of this item, and this ordinance will change the water rates, and for the minimum single-family residential customer, the minimum commercial or industrial customer charge, and the additional usage charge for all customers for the next four fiscal years. It will also increase the monthly trash collection fee for the next two years, and the rate increases can be found in our agenda packet if you want to take a look at what those are. Tony, did you want to give an overview of...
Sure. This is just a reminder that these are both user rate increases we discussed as a part of the budgeting process for the coming fiscal year. They'll take effect beginning July 1st, meaning in the coming fiscal year. And for the water, it's, you know, those are around some planned water system improvements and capacity, capital projects. And then for solid waste, it's going to help with increased operating costs since they were last increased, since the rates were last increased, and help compensate for lower value of recyclable materials.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for that overview. All right, let's hear the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2022-1004, and ordinance amending Chapter 107 of the Code of Ordinances in the City of Coralville, 2011, as previously amended by changing water and solid waste collection fees. Introduced for adoption, second consideration by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. I'll just start out the discussion by just reminding folks again, if you want to take a look at the numbers and the timing of those increases, they are in our agenda packet, like I said before. We also discussed them at the last meeting as well. So you could go to the website and take a look at the meeting minutes if you want to take a look at those rates. But we were very careful about making sure that they were gradual, and that they were happening over a period of time. Are there any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Item number 10 is a union contract. This agreement is for one year with PPM-E. This is the union that represents our police officers, and we have our Human Resources Director, Mike Funky, here to share a little bit of information about this item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We were able to come to an agreement with the Coralville Police Officers Association for a one-year term. We were hoping for more, but in the end, we all thought one year to get it done was the right thing to do. The biggest thing was, we were able to implement our idea for a new wage scale plan to better recruit and retain officers. So we were able to lower or increase the starting wage, and then also extend out the top wage. So the more senior officers currently who were stuck on the top scale will now have room to move, about another four years to move on the pay plan. So that'll help us in our advertising, so we can do a better job of showing what the base pay is and what the top out pay will be. So we hope that will help out. And then we also just did some increases to the MT incentive pay, hourly shift differential for those working the mid-shifts and the overnight shifts. And then also, because we're hiring so many people, the FTO program, a lot more is being put on the police officers themselves to train the new officers. So we're giving them some premium pay for those hours as well.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for that overview. The resolution, please.
Resolution approving an agreement with the Public Professional and Maintenance Employees Union representing police officers, effective July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions or discussion on this item?
Impact on next year's budget?
The budget was approved for, I believe, 3% or 3.25%. So the wages themselves individually will be higher than what was budgeted. However, that can easily be absorbed due to some vacancies we have, and then all the new officers coming in just recently versus the senior officer pay that we were budgeting at because it was so long ago, will make up the difference.
Still think we'll be under what we budgeted.
We'll be under, yep.
And is this contract usually negotiated for five years? Am I remembering that correctly?
It depends on just what we can agree to. Like transit and public works, we agreed on three years, and that's what we're hoping for. We always try to keep them the same. This one, I think the last time was two years. No, it was three years last time as well. So there's just, we couldn't come to an agreement on a multi-year contract, so we were stuck with one year. So we'll hit it again in a couple months.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
The resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 11 is a 28E agreement with Johnson County for the Mobility Coordinator position. This agreement is for the City of Coralville's share of the full-time Johnson County Mobility Coordinator for one year, and is not to exceed $16,588. The resolution, please.
Resolution approving a 28E agreement with Johnson County regarding a Mobility Coordinator position, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or comments on this item?
For consistency, what's the effect of the budget on this? Do we know? Is this what we budgeted for this?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is a really, I just want to say, this is a really valuable service that the county offers, and I think it's really fantastic that Coralville is a part of it. They offer training. They've been doing a lot of trainings right now on how to ride the bus. They provide a really valuable resource for, you know, educating residents on what transportation options are out there. And I think it's, you know, really important and really valuable, especially since we know that transportation can be a real barrier for people trying to access employment, trying to access other services. So I'm excited to see this again, and always happy to partner with the county on this position.
Is this position only for one year, and then the next year we'll go back to the drawing board again for how much we contribute?
Yeah, this is one year, but there is a formula for how that gets extended.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
It seems like just a very high-paying position.
I have no idea, based on Johnson County's scale, whether that would be or not.
Because we're paying a pretty small fraction of it, aren't we?
Yeah.
15%.
But it's formulaic based on use and...
Right.
Yeah.
Based on what?
Like usage, and there's a whole bunch of different factors that go into that. So we probably wouldn't be paying as much as Iowa City or...
Right, 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 right. We're paying 15%, I guess.
Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross? Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 12 is the Clear Creek Trail Connection Project. This resolution allows the city to obtain three easements necessary for the Clear Creek Trail Connection Project, and to pay compensation to the property owners for these easements. The resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the acquisition of certain real property interests for the Clear Creek Trail Connection Project, is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by...
Second. Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Just as a reminder, this is the connection between the Tom Harkin Trailhead and Highway 6, and this is something that the council has been working on for many years. And so this will be the next step in moving that forward.
Yeah, I thought that was supposed to start this summer.
Yeah, it's gotten delayed because of some delays on the DOT end, but the hope is that we'll get it the first half done yet this fall. And the next spring will be the last piece of that. Another key to this is it not only serves the trail, but it also provides pedestrian and bike access to the post office, which we've had several people, you know, that live in Coralville that don't have their own transportation. And so it's very difficult to get to the post office if you need to do any business there.
Great. Any other comments, questions about this one?
Will there be impact on traffic at all?
Yeah, there will be. There'll be times that there will be a detour.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 13, Coralville Hyatt Regency Hotel and Conference Center. We have two parts to this item. We will start with item A. This agreement is for assisting in the guest room and lobby space upgrades at the Coralville Hyatt Regency, and is not to exceed $92,865. The resolution, please.
Resolution approving an architectural services agreement with calling Altamore Architects for certain improvements to the Coralville Hyatt Regency Hotel and Conference Center. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Questions or discussion?
Yeah, both of these contracts are part of the budget for the overall renovation of the hotel, which will be the meeting, or excuse me, the rooms, public space being the lobby, and the restaurant.
Any other questions on this one or comments? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Onto item B. This agreement is for assisting in the retail and beverage concepting and branding for the upgrades at the Coralville Hyatt Regency, and is not to exceed $47,500. The resolution, please.
Resolution approving a consulting agreement with CB5 Hospitality Consulting Group, LLC, for certain improvements to the Coralville Hyatt Regency Hotel and Conference Center, is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or discussions?
Italian. He said Italian.
Oh, it's your suggestion. That does sound good.
We'd be pleased to know that they had three concepts to present so far, and two of the three were Italian.
There you go. There you go. All right. That's awesome. All right, any other suggestions or thoughts on this one? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye!
Resolution is enthusiastically approved with all ayes. Item number 14, First Option Amendment to the Iowa River Landing Retail Lease Agreement. This option would extend Adeva Salon and Spa's lease for five years, ending May 31, 2027. We have the resolution, please.
Resolution approving First Option to Lease Agreement with Adeva Salon and Spa Inc. for 901 East 2nd Avenue, Suite 125. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Seconded. Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion on this one? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 15, Iowa River Landing Retail Lease Termination Agreement. This will end the lease for Lavasina in the Iowa River Landing District, and reduce the incremental tax rebates payable to Patel Holdings by $275,000. Kelly, do you want to give a brief overview of this one?
Yes. We, there are two different things going on here. The Patel family has Hawkeye Hotels, and then they had two restaurants in the Iowa River Landing, one of which is continuing. And when they built their corporate headquarters in Coralville... in Coralville, um, many years ago, there was an agreement to provide them incentives, um, for building the facility here and helping with some of the expenses at that time. Uh, they forgot to ever request the, um, funds from that, and so that is long past. And so, um, we will be crediting the amount that they're paying us for the termination of this lease against the amount that we owed them for, um, the incentives. So, um, we'll get both things resolved at this time and, um, our consultant is already working on filling the space.
Fantastic. Thank you for that overview. Um, could we have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a lease termination agreement with I R L Hospitality LLC, DVA La Viscina, and Patel Holdings LLC for, uh, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions or discussion on this one?
Does that agreement have, uh, statute of limitations on it, an agreement like that? Or is there any time limit?
No, there is no, there's, are you talking about the, uh, TIF agreement?
I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It goes ten, it goes ten years. So they were, they were, they hadn't requested any for, they're required to request it to show us that they've been paying their taxes and they just didn't come through.
And that's been within ten years then?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yep. We would still owe them some more money, so we're not going to pay that money in the future. Okay.
Any other questions on this item? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number sixteen, Iowa River Landing Retail Lease. This, uh, is, this item is for, uh, a lease in the River Landing for DeFaw Corporation doing business as Catch Boutique. And this will enter into a three-year lease agreement in the Iowa River Landing. This item will also set the public hearing for June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. The resolution, please.
Resolution of intent to dispose of an interest in real property and soliciting alternate proposals for the leasing of nine twenty East Second Avenue, Suite one sixty, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions on this item? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number seventeen, I would consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Um, Madam Mayor, I ask to consider the motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended, A through R.
All right. Moved by Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Item number eighteen, City Administrators' Reports.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We're in the midst of our spring cleanup time and this last weekend, we had the recycle swap meet, which was very successful. This was the seventeenth year, uh, of that event. Um, just, um, thank Dawn and the other city staff that, um, helped to organize that. Lots and lots of people both dropping things off and taking them. And so, um, the items that were left, um, that didn't get taken, um, Salvation Army came at the end of the morning on Saturday and picked them up. And then this week is Mayor's Cleanup Week. So if you haven't had your garbage service yet this week, you can still put items out on your curb. And then, um, just thought it was interesting, this last weekend in the Iowa River Landing, uh, there was over a hundred and ten girls' teams playing basketball with the All Iowa Tech program. And they were in the Hyatt, um, Exhibit Hall, in the Field House, and then on the arena floor. And so having a hundred and ten girls' teams all throughout the Iowa River Landing and through Coralville was really a great event and, um, shows what providing those facilities, um, what a success it can be. And what was interesting is the teams that played in the Hyatt, um, uh, preferred playing in the Hyatt because of the way it was able to be set up. So they had an enjoyable time there.
How many courts? How many courts can they put on?
They had four courts in the Exhibit Hall and then obviously five in the Field House and then one main court, um, was put down in the arena. So the older, um, girls were in the Field House, the younger girls were in the, um, Hyatt on those courts. The, um, Convention and Visitors Bureau has purchased two, um, sports courts. So two of the four that were put up in the, um, in the Hyatt Exhibit Hall was for those and then All I, Iowa Tech brought two additional ones. So that's just a, an additional investment that the Convention and Visitors Bureau has put in and it's really paying dividends.
That's exciting. All right. Thank you very much. Um, on to the Mayor's Report. Unfortunately, I need to start out on a sad note this evening. I want to extend, um, condolences to the family of Caitlin Bergen for their loss. Um, Caitlin was a member of the Coralville Fire Department and, um, she was also the fiance of Jason Lang, who also, um, passed away recently. And both of them were, um, members of the, the Coralville Fire Department. So we know that both their families and our, uh, Fire Department, um, you know, they've endured unimaginable heartbreak and I just wanted to say that, you know, we're thinking about them and, and sending them lots of love. Um, I also just wanted to note, um, I am wearing a mask this evening because we are seeing some numbers creep back up in the community. Um, hopefully, maybe, uh, Councilmember Knutson can share some information on that when he gives his report. Um, but I'm just, you know, uh, going to be wearing mine more often. I had, you know, uh, with, as the, uh, community transmission was in that low category, I was, you know, kind of relaxing my, my, um, wearing of the mask. But now that we're seeing those numbers creep back up, the last time that I checked, I think Johnson County was in medium transmission rate. Um, I think it's important just to be a little bit more vigilant about mask wearing when, when we're out and about. And of course, just, you know, make sure that you are getting tested and, you know, always will encourage people to get vaccinated, get boosted, get your children vaccinated. Um, and, you know, if we do all of these things, if we're just a little bit careful, a little bit more careful for a few weeks, hopefully we can have a, a really fun, really fun summer. Um, I wanted to also just ask about Memorial Day, the Memorial Day schedule. I know that we have, I think we have another meeting before that, but, um, just maybe putting it on people's radar?
Yes, the American Legion will be hosting a, um, service in the, um, cemetery, Oak Hill Cemetery. It starts at eleven o'clock on, on Saturday, or, excuse me, on Monday of Memorial Day.
And city offices?
Will be closed.
Closed. Great. Thank you for that. Um, I also wanted to just note that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And this past weekend, uh, NAMI Johnson County hosted their annual walk. I believe this was the first year that they were able to have it in person since the pandemic. And I just wanted to give them a shout out. They're a great organization. They're doing, uh, some really great work in the community, uh, educating and working to end, uh, stigma, uh, around mental health issues. And I think this is just a really important thing, especially with all of the things that we have seen in the community lately with, you know, our youth having, you know, struggling with, with mental health issues, our, you know, adults struggling with mental health issues. I'll, you know, just share that I struggle with anxiety and depression and I, I feel it's important to share that again to end the stigma. And, you know, I think you wouldn't know that I struggle with those issues if you were to see me out and about, um, because I'm a very upbeat, uh, extroverted, you know, usually, uh, yeah, happy bubbly person. But, you know, it's something that anybody can, can struggle with. And so, uh, really important that we talk about those issues and we look to find solutions in our community to, to help address, address, um, address our mental health needs. And so I really wanted to thank, um, NAMI for, for their work on that. And then finally, May is also, um, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I wanted to say thank you to the Iowa City Area Chinese Association for the beautiful evening of performances at the CCPA last weekend. Hi and Lori were both in attendance as well. It was a wonderful night. It was just a lot of fun. And I just wanted to say congratulations to the organizers and the performers. And that is all I have this evening. Um, so we'll start down at this end with, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the city attorney's report. Do you have anything? I'm sorry.
I would report that I wore a mask in court, but I was recognized anyway, so. Kevin.
All right. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Knutson.
Yeah, I just want to thank the city for Coralville Swap, having a little extra room, um, in our storied room, uh, after that. It was great, uh, that, uh, it doesn't go to the landfill and, and hopefully other people can, can use some of that stuff. Want to advocate for Ride the City Council Month next year, uh, in May. We didn't, uh, like to add that to our list. Part of the reason I, I biked in today was, uh, was because it's ride to work and this is.
That's a good idea.
Kind of work, so.
I love that.
Yep.
Maybe we could do it at the next meeting. I don't have a very good bike. I love that.
I'm all in. Mitch may come to regret it at some point if we, if it's too hot, but. So that's, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Gross.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things. I'm going to touch base that are on the work session agenda just because I have to go to a high school band concert here in a few moments, but I just want to make sure they got a couple of points conveyed. I know we're going to be talking about the filling of the vacancy that was created, so I just wanted to talk about that real quick and just say, um, I could probably go either way. If we do end up appointing, I do feel strongly that that person should not be a candidate in the next election to get an unfair advantage. So I know the school district has taken that approach and I think it makes sense to do so. Um, and I also think just given the amount of time that is now until the next, uh, election, you know, November of twenty-three, it might make sense to do a, an election. So that's kind of where I am on that topic. And then regarding the allocation remaining ARPA funds, I've got a lot of support and feedback. There's the article about, uh, the council talking about maybe helping, uh, with position Northwest. And there's a lot of support coming in from a school district standpoint to a community standpoint. Um, I'm meeting this week with UAW to kind of just see specifically what that would look like. So I'll be able to report that back, uh, with the dollar amount. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
And I'm going to head out because I got to be at West by seven thirty, so. I'll finish. I'm, I'll listen to my colleagues and I'm going to go very well. Because Hi and Lori, I know you have riveting stuff, so I want to hear.
Well, let's hear your, your, your stuff.
Madam Mayor, I am here, Mitch, if you guys have any questions during the work session. I know we talked. I can, yes. So Mitch, I'm, that's why I'm here, for the work session.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so it's warm. That mean everything is growing outside. And, um, here in Coralville, we have beautiful park and beautiful, you know, nature area, but we also battling garlic mustard, which is a very aggressive, uh, invasive plant that will take over, you know, all of your woodland area and crowd out all of the native species. And so here in the city of Coralville, beginning May ten, we, um, have a place where you can pour garlic mustard and, and compose them. You don't want to compose them in the, in your home compost area because it's not hot enough in order to kill it. So if you pour them, put them in a trash bag or in a container and then go, um, near the community garden, that's where you can dispose them in a container that mark garlic mustard. That's where you should put them. Don't put them anywhere else. Um, yeah, so if you can, when you walk the, the, the outdoor, see garlic mustard and you can do a Google search. They'll show you a photo and you know exactly what they look like. Uh, pull them up. Uh, that would help our, our park a lot. And then, uh, piggyback onto Kelly Mayor's Cleanup Week. I know that it started yesterday, but if you have useful things, like household thing in your house, instead of set them out on the curb and, uh, fill up the landfill, check out Houses Into Home, um, on, uh, houseitintohome.com, um, no, dot org. There's a lot of things that they can use and they are always looking for bed and mattresses and things like that. So check them out first, um, look at their donation hour. And if you can, uh, drive those stuff that you no longer use but still useful, um, to them, that would, um, save our landfill and also, um, help other member in our community. Um, the Direct Assistant Program from the county is up and going. And I would encourage any community member who has been, um, you know, excluded from the still, still, uh, stimulus check help that we, um, that was, what, two, two, two times, two years ago or one year ago. Everything is, it's muddled together. You have, um, an opportunity to apply to get that funding. And if approved, you get one thousand, four hundred, uh, dollar. There is a, um, a clinic on Friday, this Friday, May thirteenth, at the Human Health Service Building. You can make an appointment or you can walk in. Um, and then any partner in the community, like the Coralville Public Library, the Food Pantry, um, the North Liberty Food Pantry, North Liberty, I, uh, North Liberty Library, Iowa City Library, Iowa City Compassion, um, the Center for Worker, the Center for Worker, CWUJ. Center, uh, for, uh, CWJ. I would just say that. Um, they also offer help. So if you need help, go to any of those places and they'll be able to help you fill out application. Let's see what else. Piggyback onto the mayor. Uh, May is, um, AAPI History, History and Heritage, um, Month, but it's also Mental Health Awareness Month. And I know that in the AAPI community, mental health is something that we don't talk about, um, which is not okay because it affects, um, AAPI a lot more than, than other community. Uh, but for some reason, it's, it's, uh, something taboo. So I would, um, you know, I, I, I would say to community member to pay attention to, uh, your friend, your neighbor, your family members, check in on them, you know, let them know that it's okay to talk about, uh, mental health issue. Um, you know, we, people will suffer from it and it's okay. It's, it's normalize that so that it's, um, it's no longer a taboo. You can help save, um, people lives. Um, and then if you take a home test, a home COVID test and, um, is positive, please report that to the Johnson County Public Health Department. They have, um, an area where you can go and report that test. So that way we can keep the data and we can have a, a more accurate number of, um, the infection rate in our community. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Sorry, Mitch, that took a long time.
All right. Lori, last but certainly not least.
Well, congratulations to all the graduates this weekend. And, uh, Legally Blonde, the musical, has one more weekend at the Center for Performing Arts. It's a fun musical. Thank you.
All right. Fantastic. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Quinn, seconded by. Seconded by Knutson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Meeting is adjourned.